For those attending tonight who wish to provide comments on agenda items, you may speak to the commission during the public comments section of the agenda. Those who attend in person will be called upon first and asked to come to the podium and sign in with your name and address. Those attending via Microsoft team will be called upon next and are asked to utilize the raise your hand option and unmute your microphone when called upon. We ask that if multiple people have the same comment, only one person speak on that same subject. Again, thank you for attending. We will now begin meeting with the roll call.
Thank you. Vice Chair Hours.
Here.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner Egley.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
And as a standing, Commissioner Hatch.
Here.
Yes.
Thank you.
And at this point, I believe I have to appoint, I have to appoint her as a
Yes.
As a regular member for tonight's meeting. Commissioner Dean Don Hatch. This time we will have the pledge of allegiance and I would ask if the Boy Scout troop that is present would come up and lead us in that. Everyone stand please.
To lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which has advanced, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job.
Uh, this time I ask for approval of the moment minutes. The May eighth meeting and July tenth meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the May eighth, 2024 and July 10th, 2024, planning commission meeting.
I second that.
Roll call please.
Vice Chair Hours.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Egley.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
And Commissioner Hatch.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Okay, we'll now have the public hearing and I will, uh, force item three A, which is an ordinance for a final planned unit development for Ziggy's Coffee, legally described as lot four Monument Marketplace, North filing number one, and located at one, six, five, two, nine cinematic drive view, excuse me.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so my name is Dan Ungerleiter. I'm the planning director for the town of Monument. Uh, I'll go ahead and take you through staff's report that was included in your agenda packet. And hopefully everything's going to work. So far. There we go. Very good. Um, so, um, as the Chair Hours expressed, uh, this is a public hearing. Uh, these are the documents before you on the PowerPoint presentation are the notices that were, um, put out for this prob, for this request. Uh, you'll see that it's a, um, there's a, there was a notice in the newspaper as well as, um, notices that were mailed out by the applicant, uh, to the adjacent property owners, um, in accordance with our code. The, uh, um, the applicant is seeking approval of a final plat or final plan unit development for lot four of Monument Marketplace North, uh, for construction operation of Ziggy's Coffee. Um, as proposed Ziggy's Coffee, um, is a franchise owned fast food restaurant with a, with a drive through, uh, that would be, uh, developed and operated at this location. Um, the exhibits that are included with your staff, with the staff report, um, include a location and future land use maps from the comprehensive plan, uh, public hearing notice, as I showed, uh, the final plan unit development or site and site plan documenting documents, uh, construction documents, uh, drainage report and traffic report are all provided to you by reference. Um, hopefully the link, uh, that was provided to you was, uh, um, worked for you so you could take a look at the more detailed documentation, um, as well as a draft by, um, findings of fact. Um, only being provided to you as a starting point. This is of course your document at the end of the, end of the evening to be attached to your motion. Um, just for everyone's reference, um, final plan unit developments are considered, um, based on these standards. Uh, the proposed use meets the intent of the comprehensive plan for the property. The final plan unit development is consistent with the approved preliminary plan unit development, uh, previously approved. Um, onsite circulation and access are designed for the anticipated type of pedestrian vehicular traffic generated by the restaurant and drive through. Um, building design in terms of orientation, space, materials, exterior color and texture and so on, um, uh, are, are considered and, um, anticipated for this commercial development. Uh, landscaping, uh, is, um, is of quality design enhancing the area and the property. Uh, adequate offsite parking is provided for both standard and ADA accessible. Uh, and then the final plan unit development fits within the context of the plan, uh, planned land use pattern, roadway and utility systems of the larger surrounding area. Um, if you recall in the actual development code, there are other standards, but those aren't applicable to this use. Those are more for residential and other types of mixed use. So those are not listed here. Um, the applicant, um, is MA, MAH Architectural Group, uh, from Denver, Colorado. Uh, the property owner is Spiritual Bean Four LLC, um, and, uh, we know what, we know the property, um, and, uh, they're seeking approval of a final plan unit development for the restaurant and drive through. Uh, the, the, both the, uh, developer as well as the applicants are here tonight if you have any questions of them. Uh, the property is, uh, contained within the, uh, Monument Marketplace North, um, right with reference to ordinance number twenty-four, two thousand nineteen for the preliminary PUD. Uh, next door, everyone might, um, hopefully has visited our Kentucky Fried Chicken and drive through at some point, um, with, uh, during a, uh, a need for dinner. Uh, to the south, uh, there's still vacant properties, um, and to the east, uh, there's miscellaneous commercials on the, miscellaneous commercial on the, uh, east side of Jackson Creek Parkway. Um, to the west is, uh, remains vacant, um, and is also part of the Monument Marketplace PUD. Um, um, as I said, uh, the proper, the property was originally platted is of Monument Marketplace, uh, filing number sixteen on November ninth, nineteenth, two thousand seven. Um, and I believe that would be no, it might've been filing number one. On July first, two thousand nineteen, uh, town council adopted the ordinance twenty-four, two thousand nineteen, granting a zoning change and the preliminary plan unit development for Monument Marketplace. Uh, each parcel within the Monument Marketplace, uh, North filing one is required to obtain a final plan unit development approval prior to the issuance of a land development and building permit. And that's what they're seeking tonight. Um, the, uh, the building is, uh, um, a single story building, uh, located along the east prop, um, along the east side of the property with a drive through circulating to the south. Uh, they're, um, they're actually providing more than adequate number of parking spaces. Uh, twenty-seven are being provided when twenty are required. Um, this, um, stacking, uh, they, they, uh, they're providing actually, uh, depending on how you count, it's fourteen or fifteen cars above stacking, uh, within the drive through, which, uh, again meets and exceeds our requirements. Uh, they are providing a, a matching dumpster, um, enclosure on the, towards the, uh, or to, adjacent to the entrance on the west side of the property. Um, and then also we worked with them directly similar to what, uh, the town did with Kentucky Fried Chicken. They are providing a sidewalk ramp access up to the Jackson Creek Parkway sidewalk, uh, which they are also building. Uh, landscaping is, uh, um, actually quite nice. Uh, they are, uh, meeting and, uh, and exceeding landscape requirements, um, um, per the design guidelines and the mast in the, uh, uh, for the preliminary PUD as well as the town's landscape requirements. Um, I could certainly, um, answer any questions of that, but I can tell you that it's a, it's a mixed, a mixed bunch of landscaping. Um, and, uh, it's going to look quite nice. Uh, although we don't approve floor plans as part of, uh, as part of a development approval process, um, I thought it was interesting to show you that they are providing, uh, uh, they have a cafe of about twelve hundred square feet, uh, with, uh, uh, forty-eight seats internally as well as an additional sixteen seats outside. I'm always interested in that because I like to sit outside and drink my coffee. So this is going to be a, a nice addition. Um, uh, there, here's the architecture, um, and design of the, the building. Uh, you'll see that it's a, it's a mix of, uh, uh, drive it wood, uh, and, uh, flagstone, um, with a standing steel seam, or I'm sorry, a steel roof. Uh, um, the sign package has also been provided upfront as part of this, uh, final PUD. Um, and it, it complies with our, our maximum, uh, sign requirements. Um, again, um, the, the design of the sign is actually very compatible and, um, looks really nice on the building. So I think it's going to be a nice feature. Uh, the property does have a monument sign. Uh, you can see that on the left side of this picture, um, it complies with our monument sign requirements. Um, it'll help identify the property from Jackson Creek Parkway. Uh, so going back to the review criteria, uh, the subject property is designated for mixed use by the town's comprehensive plan, uh, which was adopted in two thousand seventeen. Uh, this, uh, does it, this designation provides for a mixture of non-residential and residential development, professional offices, personal services, convenience, retail and restaurants, uh, connected by sidewalks and trails. Uh, the proposed development meets the intent of this designation. Uh, development code, um, uh, based on state, uh, staff's analysis and input provided by the town's, uh, development review team partners, which includes the Monument Fire, Fire District and others. Uh, the proposed project is consistent with all applicable development standards and adequately addresses all criteria. Uh, stormor, stormwater management, uh, is, as I indicated in, in the staff report and uh, they, um, they have provided us a, an updated, uh, truck traffic, I'm sorry, stormwater study, uh, but the, um, provided by, uh, SIVA or CIVA Engineering LLC. Um, and that report concluded, and we also concluded the stormwater drainage improvements will provide adequate protection to this site without having adverse impact on the adjoining upstream and downstream properties and is in compliance with the final drainage report for Monument Marketplace filing number one. Uh, and last, uh, traffic, uh, analysis report, the applicant provided a traffic generation, uh, analysis report for the project. Uh, the report was prepared by SM Roca LLC and, um, uh, in February of two thousand twenty-four, and that report concluded that the proposed restaurant with a drive through is not, um, is expected to not have a negative impact on traffic operations for the surrounding road, uh, network. Um, uh, we agree with the assessment of that report. Uh, so, um, as I said before, we, um, I provided you, uh, this proposed finding of fact. Uh, the, it lists out similar, uh, items that I, I outlined at the beginning of my presentation. Um, you are welcome to make any modifications to this that you'd like, additions or subtractions. Um, again, this is only meant as a draft. Um, and I'll leave that to you, and I could pull that back up for you when you're having a discussion. Um, tonight's, excuse me, tonight's recommended action is a motion to make a recommendation to approve the final plan unit development for the development of lot four of Monument Marketplace North for a restaurant and drive through is supported by the attached findings of fact and described by the following documents. Uh, site plan for lot four, uh, prepared by MAH Architectural Group, uh, grading erosion control and site construction plans for Ziggy's Coffee, prepared by CIVA S Engineering, uh, drainage report for Monument Marketplace North filing number one A, uh, prepared by the same engineering group, and then the traffic generation and now, um, and analysis for Monument Marketplace Ziggy's Coffee, prepared by SM Roca LLC. Uh, um, it also should include the attached, your attached findings of fact, uh, in support of your recommendation. Uh, with that, if you have any questions, let me know. Otherwise I may turn it back to you.
Does the applicant have any presentation or? Okay, thank you very much. At this time, I will, uh, open the public hearing. Uh, for the, uh, do we have anyone in the public that wants to speak? Boy Scouts don't want to speak? Cub Scouts? Okay. Anybody online?
So far I don't see anyone online that wishes to, uh, raise any questions or pose any complaints.
With that being said, I will close the public hearing and look to the commissioners for any questions or comments that you have might about the.
I have a question for the applicant. When you were, uh, laying this out in your orientation, why was it that you put the front doors and the back and the drive through, which I would consider the front since it's on Jackson Creek Parkway, and you put that facing Jackson Creek Parkway?
The reason we did that is for drive through efficiency. Uh, about sixty to seventy-five percent of the lot is covered with easements. So there was very little flexibility with orienting the building and maximizing drive through efficiency. Uh, so we felt that this configuration, uh, gave the client best, uh, stacking for drive through as well as presenting a front facade to the future developments in the other side of Jackson Creek, or cinematic, excuse me.
So that's what you're considering your front door and not Jackson Creek Parkway?
Correct. The front door, the front entrance, primary entrance is west facing.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, if you could introduce yourself, please.
Sure. My name is Nick Urquhart with MAH Architectural Group.
Uh, Nick, I have a question for you as well. This is Commissioner Egley. Um, I noticed that the only access in is off of what is being designated as a private road, uh, off of Harness Road. Um, my concern is maintenance, snow removal and continuing maintenance of that road, not only for the businesses that are there, but the consumers that want to frequent those businesses. How do you address that? Who's taking care of that?
Uh, what I can say to that effect is that, uh, sto, snow storage was an item that came up through multiple rounds of review with TownSAP. And, uh, we had to provide, uh, areas of snow storage and that is represented by, it's maybe difficult to see, but there's a dotted, uh, areas in the northwest corner, the northeast corner, and then right around the first, uh, left, right, uh, left turn elbow in the drive through on it. Um, so as far as access from cinematic view, that is our primary access. We can access from Jackson Creek Parkway to grade, uh, issues. So that is our primary access as well as, uh, the access point to the, uh, the northwest corner of the site. There's the existing entry point that we had to provide a buffer of space so we can't, uh, misalign the two accesses from, uh, commercial properties across them.
So how do, how do we ensure that there's adequate snow removal and maintenance on that private road, uh, for the duration?
Sure. Side developers and the original developer of Monument Marketplace North. And, um, as a part of Monument Marketplace North, there is a common area and maintenance agreement and, uh, a reciprocal access and grant of easement agreement that were both recorded of the, their property and each of the users, each of the lots within there, um, pay their proportionate share of common area and maintenance and creek side developers as the current maintenance director. And we would, we hire and, uh, maintain snow removal, uh, the road lighting and, uh, lighting along cinematic view, uh, and other like shared monument signs that would be built.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
So ahead.
I think the only question I have, which I believe you answered and is probably mainly targeted toward staff, but, um, sidewalk along the cinematic view is not required based on the comprehensive plan. Is that correct?
So the, the original plum, plan unit development for the overall site did not, um, did not require a sidewalk on cinematic view. Um, that right away is actually narrow. It's for, I believe it's forty feet. Uh, so there's not a lot of room to do much in there at this point or may, or make a change. Um, their primary focus has always been on Jackson Creek Parkway, uh, for pedestrian access.
Yep. That makes sense. That was my only question.
Commissioners, did you want to speak to that?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
Peter, everybody, my name is Greg Bland. So my wife and I, both partners, the owners of this, we're setting it up. So just want to give ourselves to you. We've been obviously pretty excited about having this set up here. Uh, we live here, my wife and I, um, and our grandson, he's, he's loving it, living with us. We live here in Monument, you know, it's a bear creek. So it's nice to finally have a pop and shop nearby. So it's all, we own five other Ziggy's. We own three here in Carlos Springs, two up in Loveland. So it's, this is nice having close to home for us. So we wanted to do is that. And I would say this is a, kind of see the, you look at the design, I'm trying to, something might say is probably overdid it. You do sort of landscaping with design, uh, that's my wife's fault. Uh, I tell you because it's, it's got her baby. This is her thing. I, I do the on the side of these guys, uh, but she does the design and everything else. I think we're going to find when you walk in, we have a, this fireplace inside, you know, make it a cozy, warm atmosphere. Friends and a family. Um, we've got, we're already kicked with Palmerage. We have a banner in their gym. We're connected with, uh, Lewis Palmer's got a banner going in the field as football program as well. So we're very invested in the community. Uh, we've been saving up and loving where our stores there, uh, saving those stores and, and so we like to be very involved. You'll see we have an educator day coming up in September. We provide free drinks for any educator, uh, that day. It'd be wonderful, military members as well. Uh, so if you're not familiar with the Ziggy's two, two guys, because some folks know us and don't. Um, I know we've actually had a call this morning with the Ziggy's corporate. They opened their ninety-fifth store, uh, this month. They have over three hundred and twenty in development. We joined, I think we're the tenth licensed with Ziggy's when we joined with them. They're out of Longmont, Colorado, Brandon and Cameron started it from scratch, the little store. It's one of the success stories is fun to watch. That's why we joined. We looked at, started with football, started looking at scooters, looked, you know, we looked for Dutch, all those. And we get back to Ziggy's because what they represent to their communities, when it's a local thing for us. So that's why we joined, why we expanded in five years, five years of zero stores to this, we are sixth store. But we're putting extra effort in this one, I see, design, hearing those, if this, we want to be our, our store, um, spend a lot higher. You see my wife's there a lot. Me, I'm like, tons of weeds are shoveling sidewalk down there. But yeah, we have a lot of experience working, making buildings, make sure that they always be standards. Ziggy's has a policy, just program their own corporately, that we get audited on. Well, so while we're a local owner and franchise that way, I want you to be aware that we, we take a lot of pride in this and we'll be very involved with this, just that street for us. Any questions for me or my background? Happy to take those too. All right. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I had a question might be for, possibly for, uh, Brent with regard to, uh, drainage. So I, the drains report was outstanding. Thank you for the updated one. It kind of led me to believe, because it didn't really show the area that's to the west. So does it, it doesn't drain into teach out, right? Goes into, I'm not sure if that's a detention pond that's down there. I thought it was natural space, but maybe you could expand on that a little bit for us.
Sure. So, um, six lots within Monument Marketplace North, there is a shared detention pond. For that green is blue colored area that would be diagonal southwest of them. And, um, that is, yeah, that handles all, all, um, the stormwater for those six lots. There is, I believe, outfall into, that would be No Name Creek, and that is, uh, wetlands area, correct? It's will be, uh, will not be developed. And, but yeah, that detention pond handles, uh, stormwater for all those six lots.
So that's the, the reason, uh, the reasoning behind my thinking was last year, and I'm sure you're very familiar, when we had the torrential thousand year rains, um, teach out was completely overwhelmed and a lot of silt ran down from east of I-25 all the way down, um, to in between twenty-five and Denver Road. And then down beyond that, past Denver Road into Monument Creek. And it just had a huge effect. And I just want to be sure this project, I doubt, is going to have a major impact like that. But as we develop that area, just hopefully we're keeping that at the forefront so that we don't continue to do damage to Monument Creek and, and those areas down there because it eventually gets hurt. Thank you.
Commissioner Hours, could you pull up the north elevation for me? Next. Yeah, there we go. Um, I have two questions, one on, on signage, and this may be for staff more so than the developer. Okay. Um, first, I'm pleased that you're coming to our community. And I'm glad you have a fireplace in there so he can enjoy it in the winter when he can't go outside. But, um, one of the things I'm concerned about, and that's why I asked about signage, I know we have signage codes.
Mm-hmm.
But we already have a Kmart up there. I mean, uh, hey, Kentucky Fried Chicken. And one of the things I'm concerned about, and I, I'm not sure whether, uh, Commissioner Green's question had anything to do with this or not, because there will be signage on Jackson Creek. But we have a lot of residents that live on the south side of those new homes, of those new businesses that are going up there. And when folks drive into the business area for Walmart and so on and so forth, you look up there, unless you know that that's a Kentucky Fried Chicken building, you really don't know that that facility is up there. And I'm concerned about the same thing about the Ziggy's Coffee, because when you look at that, although you've got a, they've got a symbol there, it doesn't say Ziggy's. It doesn't do anything to invite people. And so my concern is the commissioner, does our sign policy consider the visibility from the various perspectives of town? In this case, what we're talking about? So that people that are coming from other parts of the town that may not have reason to go or may not even want to go that way otherwise because of that intersection up there. Um, am I making sense?
Well, I, um, so Chair, I, I appreciate, uh, where you're coming from. Uh, you're looking, um, you're advocating for the business to make sure that they're going to be successful.
Yes.
Um, as, and their investment is a successful investment. Um, I can say what they're proposing here, we didn't make any modifications to or require them to make changes to.
Well.
This is what they proposed. Um, and second, our ordinance is set up in a way to help identify buildings, uh, without, uh, without screaming, uh, so to speak. Um, you, we're relying on the businesses, uh, their referrals and their other marketing campaigns. Um, their building itself is a very large architectural element that's going to attract business and, um, to their site. Um, but we're not here dictating how they, um, how, what they specifically put on their signs. We just give them maximum, um, maximum sizes and locations to put that. So, um, I, we rely on their designers, uh, to, for the proposal that you see before you tonight.
Which would then cause me to beg to question your way.
That's me. The signage is oftentimes preliminary, but it takes, uh, it makes its way to the end of the project you seeing here. However, uh, most typically there is a separate signage permit process wherein the, and I can't speak for Monument or color, I speak building apartments specifically, but typically they have signage codes, amount of signage area that's required, like, um, what kind of signs, it was illuminated box signs, that sort of thing. It's a whole process that I can't pretend to be an expert of. But we do. But we do, I'd like to add, we do have a monument sign uh fronting Jackson Creek Parkway. That's the monument sign.
Yeah, I'm, I'm seeing that and I saw that on both sides and I, I hope you understand my point. I'm just saying, when you drive, if you drive from the south. Jackson Creek Parkway. And you look down there, you see structures, but you really don't know what those structures are and the business structures and. If we're having businesses in our community. I'd love to see people go to those businesses. That's the only reason I beg the question.
And you know what? We could absolutely change that signage to that's more savings coffee.
I mean, what, do, do you think it's a good idea? If you don't think it's a good idea, that's fine. It's your business. I'm begging the question, only as the planning commissioner concerned with, you know, we. I guess the other question I'd ask, you know, is um part of the development that's down there, there's big, large signs that ultimately identify. What? Businesses are in an area. Is something like that going to happen? As we go more further north in that area? I, I just, I don't like to see businesses come in and.
I, I, I think Brett uh kind of alluded to the fact that there could be a joint monument sign at some point for the overall development, but that's, that's down the, down the road. I, there's nothing to say, there's nothing more attractive to a, a new business in town than the, a filled drive through and a full parking lot. So. Um and that is usually what attracts more people to come and try it out. So. Um I, as I, I said, we're very pleased with the sign package that you proposed tonight. Um and we feel that it's strong. Uh the architecture of the building and the. And the landscaping that your, your wife forced you to do um is uh, uh is certainly gonna attract um, attract the eye of folks. Um um but uh again, our code doesn't prevent them from doing what you're, what you're saying. That, that's there. We, we just limit the, the size and, and. Material and, and uh establish material standards.
That was just my question. I just made the comment about what I was concerned about, all right?
Appreciate that. Typically, it's the opposite. We're fighting.
I just, I just want you to be successful. And um, okay, the other question I have. Is um, since the sidewalk question was brought up. Uh and I don't know that this is your concern as the other one. Uh since we can't get a sidewalk on the east, on the east side. Is it possible at some point there's gonna be a sidewalk on the west side of uh the cinematic? And the reason I ask that, you got this big apartment complex back there. Where people are going to want to be coming forward for. Any number of things, which is a good walking distance. And certainly with no sidewalk there, it doesn't make it. Good, so. Think that's.
Um Chair, I, I think that's something that we'll take a look at with the developer um as development's coming in. Um and if, if it's warranted and makes sense, we'll work with them on it.
Yes.
One thing I'll just add is that we do have an internal walk between our site and KFC itself.
Yeah, I understand that. I understand that. And I think that's good. I'm just, you know, concerned when you got that big apartment complex. You got the distance coming down. People are going to want to be walking. And right now we have more people walking in. Areas that aren't very safe and uh, and it discourages people from. Coming forward. That's just my comment on that. And that's not your issue, I don't think. I think it's the dev- uh developer. Were you gonna speak to that or?
I don't think so.
All is along harness, all the Jackson Creek Parkway, Jackson Creek Parkway connects all the way down to Monument Marketplace. Um there is also a sidewalk that goes right there from harness. Down to that lot one, which. Uh sorry, is across the street from Ziggy's. It's across cinematic view, but it does not connect down to the, to the Walmart service road. So they would uh, just there, there is sidewalk along Jackson Creek Parkway, but not on the cinematic.
Uh we, uh we did discuss that at the staff level and I think it's, is, is uh future projects come in for this development. We'll certainly work with the developers best we can to.
That's.
To provide and improve uh pedestrian access.
Just the point I wanted to make. Thank you very much. That's the only questions that I have. Are there any other questions? No other questions being uh. Needed at this time, I will ask for a recommendation. Or approval.
Uh Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Egley. I move that the planning commission recommend approval. Of a final planned unit development for Ziggy's Coffee legally described as lot four. Monument Marketplace North filing number one and located at one, six, five, two, nine cinematic view.
Here, second.
I will second.
Is it, is it possible that you can at least uh um reference the documents that I placed in, in our recommendation as well as the finding of fact?
Sure. Can you put those back up on the screen? They're not on my.
They're on there now.
Oh, they are.
Or I can hear, better yet. Here somewhere. There we go.
And uh, this motion is supported by the attached finding of facts described in the following documents. Number one, site plan for lot four A Monument Marketplace North filing. Number one A prepared by M A H Architectural Group, last revised five twenty, twenty twenty-four. Number two, grading, erosion control and site construction plans. Ziggy's Coffee prepared by C I V A S Engineering, last revised six eighteen, twenty twenty-four. Number three, drainage report for Monument Marketplace North filing number one A lot four A. Prepared by C I V A S Engineering LLC, last revised five fifteen, twenty twenty-four. And number four, traffic generation analysis for Monument Marketplace. Ziggy's Coffee prepared by S M Roka LLC dated two twenty-two, twenty twenty-four.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
Sure.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Thank you. Vice Chair Hours.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Egley.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
And Commissioner Hatch.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes, six in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you all for coming to our community. I wish you the best of success and I'll come have a cup of coffee one day. Okay. On agenda, public items uh for land development op- only. Uh I'll open. For that at this point, is there anyone in the audience? Anyone online?
At this time, I don't see anyone online who would.
Okay, even though it's a, a non-agenda, I mean, land development, I, I wanna. I was remiss because I was rushed on doing this, but I'd like to identify. If you would for me, please, uh what the scout. Commission is, what, what you are, what you're local. Would, would somebody come up and please? And how long have you been a troop? Well, you look like a very fine troop. Thank you for being in troop and thank you for being here and thank you for opening our pledge of allegiance. With no other public comments? Okay.
Um, you know, if I could, um.
I had mentioned to Plan Commission during our last workshop that there'd be a, a joint session of town council and Plan Commission coming up. We're having a little difficulty scheduling that. Um but uh I'm, I suspect that sometime in September, there'll be, uh town council will be uh scheduling a special meeting. And inviting you to attend. Uh the purpose of that joint council um and uh Plan Commission meeting will be to discuss the scope. Of the upcoming comprehensive plan update uh project. Um it's really important that we all have input um both at the, the council and at the Plan Commission level to make sure that we're covering. All the topics that are near and dear and important to us, as well as what's required in the comprehensive plan update such as this. Um this project's gonna take about uh eighteen to twenty-four months to complete. So it's a, it's a significant project. Um half of it is. Uh um paid for through a grant. So uh we're fortunate, but it uh, it's still gonna require a lot of time. And effort by yourselves and other volunteers and town councils. So um as soon as we have a date for that joint meeting, I'll let you know. Uh we were hoping to make it then, at the next Plan Commission meeting, but it, it turns out we've got a conflict, so we'll have another date uh set up soon.
Okay. Uh, any other? Announcements or communications from the?
Yeah, I, I would like to. Go back a little bit to our last case, but you know, I'm glad Ziggy's is coming. I'm, I'm happy about that. I would like to talk more about orientation. I'm very concerned about this. Very concerned that Jackson Creek Parkway is. The main roadway through there and we're letting buildings turn their back on it. Which means the only front doors they have, there are none facing Jackson Creek. They're facing another direction, which to me. In, in a, you know, as far as urban design goes, I think that's not a very welcoming look for Jackson Creek Parkway. And I've watched everything be built on Jackson Creek Parkway and there are some problems. And you know, a- again, I'm, I'm not putting this on Ziggy's. I am. Putting it maybe on staff to say um before it is all. Developed. Would there be a way to look and maybe do some guidelines for development for Jackson Creek Parkway? So that we have. A welcoming look as you go down Jackson Creek Parkway and not a mishmash of. Things.
Uh I, I think the comprehensive plan update is probably gonna be the best place for us to approach that. Um for Jackson Creek Parkway and other cor- um other corridors similar to this. Um we do have another um application that's gonna be coming to you in the next month or so uh for a similar building on. You know, as part of this development. And I'll tell you that the building's oriented the same way.
Can you, can you negotiate that? Is it too late? Because if this is a P U D. You have that ability to work with the developer. To change that orientation.
Say there might be some differences of opinion and some of this has been directed um. From not this planning group, but even back to Monument Marketplace, for example, in the company that. I worked for developed Monument Marketplace, the old people Walmart. Whole center. And even if you see there, all the buildings. Based to the west along Jackson Creek Parkway. I think there was um desire to not have great signs and so forth. Basically, it's along Jackson Creek Parkway and to have it more internal as a, as a development internal.
But that's a shopping center and I worked here then, so I remember that very well. And Jackson and Monument Marketplace is sunken. It's sunken. It's very different than the subsequent. Um parcels along Jackson Creek Parkway that are at street level. And facing street level. And I. I just, uh you know, I'm just saying as a planning commissioner, I'm, if, if you. Bring something to me and it's the final P U D, I think it's too late and I don't. Particularly think it's a planning commissioner's place to say, oh, by the way, you know, flip that around. But. Being on the planning commission, I would like to start seeing some of this stuff flipped around.
Um I, I think that the best time to talk about these things uh besides the comprehensive plan update. Is during the preliminary.
Process. I agree.
Um that's where you're establishing standards and concepts and thoughts. Um not, as you said, not during the final P U D process.
I agree.
Kind of late in the game. And that's where we're gonna be caught in a lot, a lot of scenarios as we're going forward reviewing projects is that. These projects have already gone through a preliminary process, a preliminary design discussion. And that's really when we have our chance to, to negotiate and work with the, the developer to set guidelines. This is probably, this will be late in the game. I could tell you that the net, I don't think I would have had the position. Been able to um to negotiate with the developer to tell them to flip the orientation of this building with Kentucky Fried Chicken, the way, the way it is and. The way Whataburger and all these other buildings already are laid out along uh Jackson Creek Parkway. That's not to say that we can't have that conversation during the comprehensive planning discussion. About how, how this corridor and future corridors look heading into the future.
Just also in that, it's, it's consistent with Qdoba and then. There as well. And since I view is, is in essence their front door and that's where their, where. Their customers are coming in from. And so they have their door facing the road that they, that their customers are driving in from. I think, um does make sense. There is four sided architecture of signage and so forth. That does. Present well along the parkway, but I think that's. Why it's laid out that. There is more commercial de- development that is to come to the, to the north and that's something that we can definitely look at.
If I could add to the orientation piece too, I think especially with these smaller sites, it's tough to. Oriented to the Jackson Creek side because your entrance. Like um was spoken that is off of the private drive. That's what the parking's gonna be. So if you. Look at it from a standpoint of flipping it, then you're coming in through, you know, customers are coming in from the only access point into the rear of the building. It's not a very welcoming sight from that piece as well. So just the orientation of a small site is kind of tough. If you're looking at a Walmart, their parking areas are massive. So you have a little more flexibility on. Where you place the building, but on the less than an acre site. Trying to have a customer come in to the rear of the building, but also not be welcoming. So maybe it is the signage piece that can be the, that is easily implemented on a P U D versus saying. You have to, you know, orient your building a certain way. Maybe that's the way to.
I thought.
Make it a little more.
Kentucky Fried Chicken, I thought is, is okay. It's a little bit to the side, but it has a front. Um.
I, I would say this one also, and then, then you'll see the next one too. There, it has, it's, it's pretty front facing on all four sides. Um it's not, it wasn't that they turned their ba- architecture back. They turned their back to Jackson Creek Parkway. I mean, there's arc, it, it's, it's four sided, so.
It's not.
Up.
I mean, it's just, it's, it's a drive through is the whole Jackson Creek side, unlike Kentucky Fried or Qdoba.
Well, there, there's a, um and what doesn't show well in the arc elevations in this case is there's a, there's actually a cut, the drive through's got a covered roof over it. Um and there, there are some other details that are gonna give, you're right, it doesn't look like the front door to the building and I'm not, I'm not trying to. I'm not trying to sell this building that way, but, but it, it, it doesn't, it's not a brick wall um. Blank brick wall with one color and, and no, no other detail except a service door. Um I think they did a good job with the architecture. Uh but those are things we could certainly talk about. Um I, and uh, as I said, I'm coming in late to the game um in this case. Um so I, um. But I, I, I certainly would love to entertain those kind of conversations as we're going forward.
Alright.
Any other comments?
We got one. Motion adjourned.
Motion so accepted, adjourned.